... effort at calling the meeting to order, so everybody will cut me some slack if I make a mistake. Okay, so first, welcome to the May 7, 2025 regular meeting of the planning commission. And then the first item is roll call, right?
Yes. So Commissioner Merker.
Here.
Commissioner Owens.
Here.
Commissioner Opel.
Here.
Commissioner Hahn.
Here.
Commissioner Chair Martinson.
Here.
Commissioner Chu.
Here.
Vice Chair Hauser.
Here.
All right, and Commissioner Vincent has an excuse absence tonight.
Okay, and then the second item is the land acknowledgement, and Jeff would often ask if somebody wanted to read this. Is there anybody that would like to make the land acknowledgement? No, no? If anyone's willing to do it.
I can do it.
Okay, thank you.
All right. The Planning Commission recognizes that the community we live in was built on the territory of the Kuchu, the ancestral and unceded land of the Chochenyo-speaking Aloney peoples, the ancestors and descendants of the sovereign Verona band of Alameda County. This land was and continues to be of great importance to all the Aloney tribes and descendants of the Verona band. As we begin our meeting tonight, we acknowledge and honor the original inhabitants of Berkeley, the documented 5,000-year history of a vibrant community at the West Berkeley Shalom, and the Aloney people who benefit from the use and occu-- oh, sorry, and the Aloney people who continue to reside in the East Bay. We recognize that Berkeley's residents have and continue to benefit from the use and occupation of its unceded stolen lands since the city of Berkeley's incorporation in 1878. As stewards of the laws regulating the city of Berkeley, it is not only vital that we recognize the history of this land, but also recognize that the Aloney people are present members of Berkeley and other East Bay communities today. The city of Berkeley will continue to build relationships with the Lijan tribe and to create meaningful actions that uphold the intention of this land acknowledgement. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Vincent. Okay, now the next item is public comment, so anyone in the public that would like to make on a, make a comment about a topic that's not on tonight's agenda? Anybody want to speak now? Is there a microphone?
Oh, no, go ahead.
Is that working?
Okay, hello, Planning Commission. My name is Bryce Nesbit, and I work as a permit consultant and fixer when things go wrong with permits or entitlements, sometimes fixing problems from decades ago. In my travels, I often notice a building that through the planning process is being renovated, with quotes. The entire outside of the building is stripped, all the windows are gone, the roof is gone, floors are gone, there's kind of just a shell. And when I see that, something inside me dies a little bit, because whatever planning mechanisms caused that building to be renovated in that way mean that the new building doesn't have the six-inch-thick walls that you would, the air ceiling, it's not a modern building. And we've lost a lot, spent a lot of money on planning, architectural fees, in order to save a couple of two-by-fours that aren't even two-by-four, because they're the old ones. And we have a new building with less insulation and less air ceiling than it would be if that developer had been allowed to take the entire building down to the foundation. So, and an irony is that the most valuable piece of that destroyed building is probably those very sticks that are all done out of spur, they're really beautiful wood, they could be turned into something else, but they'll be buried inside that. So I encourage you to bring this up as a work item, to understand what in the planning process leads people to renovate buildings in this way that's very inefficient. I can tell you that when you go down to the planning department, excuse me, the building department, the zoning counter, they will carefully instruct you how much of the old building you have to save to come up with a renovation permit rather than a demolition permit. And I think that's wrong, and I'd like to see that changed, and I would be happy to help you get that to happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else want to make a comment about an item and about anything not on tonight's agenda? Okay, next is the order of the agenda. I think it's just as written. Does anybody have any comments or any changes to the order of the agenda? Okay, I don't have a chair person's report. I don't believe there's any ad hoc subcommittees or liaison comments. Are there any commissioner announcements? I don't think so. Staff announcements?
And we do have a few announcements. The first thing is just reporting out that the Planning and Development Department held a virtual workshop last week related to amending the zoning for North Shad and College and Zalano corridors, and just letting everyone know that the presentation, as well as the materials, should be live on the project website probably tomorrow, but definitely by the end of this week. I had reported, or a couple months ago, when the local hazard mitigation plan came to you, that the Office of Emergency Services has a consultant working on evacuation time study. That is still being finalized. I thought that, you know, we had thought that it might be going to council this month, but I don't have a date for you right now. The, the report is still being finalized, so when we do have a date, we'll share that back with you. Another item we wanted to report out about was the annual progress report on the general plan and the housing element that the city is required to prepare for the state every year in April is something that we just received confirmation from the state that they're, they have, you know, except, received. And we'll share the link to the reports and the accompanying authentic memo that we shared with council to the Planning Commission as an informational item in next month's, next month's packet. We also wanted to mention that something that will be forthcoming, probably in the fall, is, I mean, in light of, you know, something that we haven't done, but we wanted to resurrect, and I think Chair Martinson also had this idea, that the Planning Department and the Planning Director, Jordan Klein, is going to come with support from staff to give an overview of the Planning Department, the roles and functions of Planning Department and the ZAB, our staff, what we're working on, any plans to bring that to the Planning Commission in the fall. And lastly, things that are on the draft agenda for June, we have three items on the June agenda that will be public hearings, and I'm going to turn it over to Justin Horner just to give a quick summary of those items.
Great. In the June agenda, we have three planned items. One is a set of amendments to Title 23 related to accessory dwelling units. We're doing, you may remember, we had a discussion on, on two different topics of ADUs, one about condoization, which we're talking about today, and then the number of a set of amendments to the ADU ordinance to comply with state law, so those will be coming to you in June. In addition, we will have an item related to the undergrounding of transformers, an amendment to our site regulations that you will be hearing. And then the third item will be a public hearing on the rezoning of the R1A zoning district to R2. You may recall an element of the middle housing zoning changes is getting rid of the R1 zoning district and turning it into the R2 zoning district. In preparation for the city council's public hearing on that, we realized that that zoning map amendment was not properly noticed, and so we need to properly notice that and have it returned to you for a public hearing, and that's what we'll be doing in June 5. That, hopefully, the conclusion of that public hearing will result in a recommendation to the Planning Commission to move forward with the rezoning, as the Planning Commission had, had, had recommended previously, but with the proper amount of public notice. The city council has scheduled a special meeting on the middle housing zoning changes for June 26, and so any recommendation for the Planning Commission will be, will arrive in time to be included for that special meeting.
That concludes staff's announcement.
Okay, so then I guess the next thing is the approval of the minutes. So does anybody have any comments about the minutes first? I guess we do that first, though. Any corrections, additions? Okay, how about a, a motion to accept the minutes? Somebody make a motion to accept the minutes?
I'll do it.
Okay.
All right, please, the motion.
Commissioner.
Oh, two seconds. All right, Commissioner Merker?
Yes.
Commissioner Owens?
Yes.
Commissioner Opel?
Yes.
Commissioner Hahn?
Yes.
Chair Martinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Chu?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hauser?
Yes.
A motion to process.
Okay, and then I guess we're on to the, the action items. So the first one is the amendment to Title 21 to allow separate sale of ADUs as condominiums and.
Branca.
I know, but your last one should be more formal, I guess. Are we formal? Or can I say Branca?
Yeah, Branca.
What in a Branca?
Okay, good evening, commissioners. My name is Branca Tataravich, and I'm an associate planner with the Land Use Planning Division. This evening, I will present the proposed ADU condominium ordinance, which implements Assembly Bill 1033 and allows the separate sale of ADUs as condominium units. I'll begin with a brief background on the bill, explain why Berkeley is implementing AB 1033 locally, and follow with a summary of the ordinance structure. I will then conclude by highlighting the policy refinement still open for commission input, outline next steps, and hold a Q and A session. AB 1033 took effect on January 1, 2024. Previously, California law prohibited the separate sale of ADUs, but AB 1033 lifts this restriction, allowing local jurisdictions to opt-in by adopting an ordinance. In May of the last year, the Berkeley City Council approved a referral directing the city manager to implement AB 1033 and adopt such an ordinance. The referral highlights potential benefits of ADU condominiums, including increasing homeownership opportunities for moderate, moderate-income households, helping homeowners build equity, and expanding naturally affordable housing in Berkeley. The state law mandates that local ADU condo ordinances comply with the subdivision map act, the Davis Sterling Act, which governs condominiums and common interest development, and the city's subdivision ordinance. The ordinance must also include lien holder consent procedures, a safety inspection satisfied by a certificate of occupancy or safety inspection, and consumer disclosures regarding lender requirements. At the March meeting this year, the planning commission directed, directed staff to create a separate streamlined process of, for ADU condominiums. Specifically, ADU condos should not be part of the existing BMC 2128 condo conversion process. This separation means that the affordable housing mitigation fee and many rental history-based qualifying criteria will not apply. The commission asks staff to maintain renter protection for ADU tenants and apply the right of, of first refusal or exclusive right to purchase at the time of conversion. Please note that as we implement the right to purchase unit, we will consistently use the term exclusive right to purchase, ERP, throughout the Berkeley Municipal Code for clarity and consistency. Next, I will present the outline of the ordinance and how it relates to the state law requirements and how it implements the tenant protections. The order, the ordinance is placed within Title 21 subdivisions since condo creation is a land division under the subdivision map act. Title 21 governs map requirements, procedures, and approvals. Accordingly, the new section is titled accessory dwelling unit condominium subdivision. This slide shows all subsections of this new ordinance. The Purpose and Applicability subsection refers to AB 1033, states that the ordinance is applicable to lots with compliant existing or proposed ADUs, excludes ADU condos from Chapter 2128 except renter rights, and provides for ministerial parcel or tract map approval. Specifically, subsection, subsection 2129010C defines ADUs otherwise exempt from the rent ordinance but occupied by long-term tenants. For these units, the ordinance applies the condominium's ordinance right to remain in the unit, as well as the newly defined exclusive right to purchase, ERP. The newly introduced exclusive right to purchase is defined in the next section definitions. Currently, the purchase period is set to 180 days in the proposed ordinance, but this provision remains subject to planning commission motion. Next, the permit required subsection confirms ministerial approval under this ordinance. Furthermore, the eligibility subsection limits projects to a maximum of 10 condominium units. This 10-unit limit was selected in alignment with the state's effort to provide ministerial approval for projects of up to 10 units under SB 684. Staff considers this limit effective in encouraging mid-sized subdivisions larger than four units but still eligible for ministerial approval rather than a tentative map. In effect, this provision will allow projects between five and 10 units to bypass our public hearing and planning commission review and approval. Application Requirement Subsection includes a state-required provisions and specific tenant rights notices for ADU condo projects. Notice to Consumers Subsection meets state disclosure requirements. And finally, the posted refinement that remains open is the purchase period duration. The question for the planning commission is, what should the purchase period be? Staff proposes 180 days, though previous discussions ranged from 45 days to one year. And it is staff recommendation to Planning Commission to hold a public hearing to discuss the proposed amendments to the Berkeley Municipal Code, add Section 2129 ADU condominium subdivision, and provide a recommendation to the city. And that's the end of the presentation. Now, the planning commission can feel free to ask any questions, take public comments, and discuss the project. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Now, Tataravich?
Thank you.
Anybody have any clarifying questions for the staff? Charles?
Thanks, Emily. My, my questions about C or D, Title 21.29. This is the requirement that all structures and buildings included as part of the building code, the project zoning requirements in the district, or the project does, and there has to be a safety inspection. Were these, was this clause included? Is the state requirement, or was it an elective inclusion? It just seemed like an elective.
It is not a state requirement, but it was included for certain reasons, and the reasons are, in our current condo conversion ordinance, we have a similar provision that calls for code compliance, and it also states that condo conversion project is not approval of any development. So this only means that whatever building is part of the subdivision project is compliant with the code, but it can be legally non-conforming if the code under which it was approved was amended after the fact. So it's just a practice to, to, I think the, 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 the most crucial effect of that is that we are not going to consider completely legal structures with this process, and that it's outside of the zoning ordinance, it's within the subdivision ordinance.
Okay, so the, the purpose, the protection that we're trying to provide to the consumer is that if illegally built a structure, a structure without perennials, was applied for a condominium conversion, that it wouldn't be approved?
It, I think it wouldn't even be considered.
It wouldn't be considered. I think it would be good language to that effect. Thank you for explaining the business.
Other, anybody else who have a question?
You can go. On the next.
Could, could you provide some background just on how you define the ERP? Is, is it referencing a previous, previously established language that defined what that was? So it wasn't, it wasn't defined, the right of first refusal wasn't defined in this new ordinance?
So the need for the right of first refusal came from the discussion that we had in March, and the way to implement it was either to refer to condo conversion provision for, for right of first refusal or to create the same provision under this ordinance. So currently, we propose both, and the one that is in existing condo conversion ordinance is for one year, and it would apply naturally for protected units that would be protected under condo conversion and rent, rent ordinance, and this newly created exclusive right to purchase would apply to otherwise exempt units with long-term tenancy, that we outlined as potentially lacking tenant protections and the right of, of first refusal. So it is a little convoluted, and that might also be a question for planning commission. So do we want to have only one, and what the duration for that one would be? And that right of first refusal or exclusive right to purchase would be defined within this proposed ordinance?
I'll, I'll use ERP because it's a little easier to say.
ERP, yes.
So I, I guess, just the follow-up question to that is, how did you define the price-setting mechanism for ERP? Was that following a guide from somewhere else, or did we kind of create it for this process? And I think the reason, and I'll say the reason behind the question is, I've been reading a little bit about it, seen different ways of doing it, and this, this one has the owner set a price first. I think it's like a reasonable or a good faith price. Other, other models require a third-party offer in order to validate the existing tenant, let's say, or the existing, the ERP buyer, to, to validate their offer. So I'm just, I'm just trying to get some background on sort of how that ERP process was arrived at.
Yeah, so Katrina, she's a rent board planner, she's here. I think that's, that's within the purview of rent board planners, right, how to implement the, the ERP.
You know, I can, I don't believe we've discussed that beforehand, but I can get back to you, you know.
Yeah, I'm just saying it's not within, you know, the purview of Title 21, because the applications for condo conversions get routed to, to rent board planners, and then they deal with such details.
So the, the language in this particular, in the condo ADU ordinance that you're considering today mirrors the language that's currently existing in the condo conversion ordinance, and the terms of the ERP that you're requesting about, it refers to that, so it's the way that it's said in the condo conversion ordinance. Can't say that I, that we know the origin of that, you know, they describe it as, the ERP shall include but not be limited to good faith sales price in terms of sale for the unit occupied by the resident tenant. So we just ended up referring to the, to the right of first refusal provision in the condo conversion ordinance based on the direction that, you know, there were certain cases in which you wanted those existing protections to apply to ADU condos, and so we just referred to them when, I'll take a moment.
Got it. Thank you, that answers both the questions.
Okay.
Thanks for the clarification.
Commissioner.
Yeah, I, I wanted to follow up about the, like, the two, two different chapters, like, like, what was presented in the packet is, like, adding a whole new chapter about ADU condo conversions as opposed to weaving things into the existing ordinance, and I'm wondering, is that because the staff, like, heard our talk during the prior meeting on this topic and heard that what we wanted was a separate, a separate chapter, a separate process? Or did you actually, like, go through the existing ordinance and make a determination, like, no, it's just going to be smoother, simpler, easier, whatever, to, to have a whole new chapter just for these ADU conversions?
It definitely came from planning commission discussion.
Okay.
And direction.
And can I have one more question?
Yes, of course.
Do we have data about, like, how many ADUs do we have in Berkeley, and how many of those ADUs are accessory to, just say, a single-family home versus how many of those ADUs are part of a parcel that contains, like, a duplex, a triplex, some, some, like, apartment building plus the, the ADU? Is that, sorry, I should have asked this before the meeting, but is that kind of information available?
I would say it's not readily available, but part of our annual.
We were just asking about that. The annual progress report does have information on the ADUs, but not whether it's attached or detached. It doesn't.
Because we only come to it.
Oh, I'm, I'm not, I, I mean, that'd be interesting to know which ones are, are, like, physically attached, but I'm also wondering, like, how many of them, because this ordinance contemplates parcels with as many as 10 units being converted to condominiums, but a lot of the talk, a lot of the, like, comments we've heard are regarding concerns about, like, a single-family home, like, like, a sort of ordinary homeowner with a single-family home and, and one ADU on the lot. So I'm more interested in, like, what are, like, the, the sort of spread of, like, like, number of units on a, on a parcel that we're sort of looking at, maybe applying for these condo conversion permits?
First of all, with, with our amendments to ADU ordinance, we're going to be allowing two ADUs on, on a lot with single-family dwellings, so that's already going to be three. And so in my experience of reviewing building permits for ADUs, I've occasionally come across ADUs on, on lots with multifamily buildings on it. I can't really say what the percentage is, but I think I'm getting them regularly, you know? So I, I suppose there, there's going to be some implications as well.
Other questions for the staff? Carrefour questions?
One, one last question. It sounds like a lot of the draft language for what we're reviewing tonight was called from the condominium conversion law that's on books for conventional apartments being converted to condominiums. Is that true?
I would say the backbone of this ordinance comes from the state law, because they have extensive list of requirements that needed to be implemented in this ordinance. And then, yes, we did refer to our regular condo conversion process and the ordinance to try to mirror the language and the structure. In the end, because of the review process, you know, it's, it's always better to have consistency and similar or equal language.
I approve the approach, and that's been critical. I just wanted to.
Yeah, yeah, that was the approach.
Particularly with the two items that we've been asking questions about, the right of first. of first refusal and the safety issue, those are being pulled from the local ordinance, not the state requirement. Does anyone, anecdotally, I know it's a young staff here, know when the condo, original condo ordinance was passed in Berkeley? I think it's got to be three, that's all.
I don't know that off the top of my head, but when we did bring the amendments to the affordable housing requirements, the thing that condo conversion was studied, and one of the recommendations from street level advisors from Rick Jacobus was to, I mean, we just stated that not many people have done it at all because the formula was so, and the requirements were so onerous. And while the in lieu, the affordable in lieu fee requirement and the, you know, with change so that rental and ownership were the same, conversion still hasn't been addressed. That was something that because of the conversation that happened at council a couple of years ago was sort of tabled, and it hasn't yet been taken up again.
Well, it's a big part of the issue, I guess.
I recall something like 1979 and then amendments in 2008, but I'm not...
1985.
All right. Yeah, I just wanted to get clear on that, because I have a thought on that to discuss there.
All right, other, anybody else? Any other questions? All right, well, now we can have a public comment if anybody would like to make any comments and correct me. This is not a public hearing, so we don't have to move to open and close. We can just, anybody would like to comment, please step up to the microphone, identify yourself, and we'll have, how long is each?
Two minutes.
Three minutes.
I have three minutes.
Three minutes.
Okay. I'm a member of the ADU task force here at Berkeley, and when we began the process of trying to increase ADU construction in the city and in this county and in the East Bay and the state of California, there was about 2% of all construction in the state were ADUs. Now, with a lot of hard work and focus on affordable housing and trying to make it as easy as possible to build ADUs, we're up to 20% of the affordable housing annually in ADUs. That's a huge mountain we've been climbing, and we're very proud of that mountain. What we try to stay focused on are what are those markers that will either hinder or discourage ADU construction? Sometimes they're subtle and sometimes they're not subtle, but what will discourage a resident or landlord, for example, to consider ADU construction? And I think what we're looking for in this ordinance is that you bifurcate the difference between family-occupied, owner-occupied, single-family homes with ADU condos that would be potentially added to apartment complexes. I think those are two very different organic animals, and what we see is that there's two different sections in this that we've been talking about that will definitely have a negative impact on people wanting to consider condo conversion, which adds a very important layer of affordability of ownership within the city of Berkeley and throughout the state. What we've seen here in Berkeley twice is that when it's been put up to the voters as to whether or not there should be tenant rights put on a owner-occupied structure, voters twice have said, "That's a bad idea. It will discourage people from ever even considering ADU construction." If you have to, if I own a house and I cannot get rid of a bad tenant in my backyard, I'm not going to give that opportunity a chance to survive or thrive or happen. We have exempt ADUs on properties with one ADU, and exempt ADUs in Berkeley are ADUs that do not have to, which I say, have tenants have the right to stay as long as they want or whatever. And what we realize is that that exemption recognizes the unique nature of shared occupancy homes with homeowners cohabitating with tenants. Again, that's a different animal than an apartment complex. And we see that if this section goes through, the 21299010C2, it eliminates the owner's right to occupy the unit if it goes up for sale or gets condoized. And I've built a lot of ADUs as a contractor, and, oh, I'll line this up. And what I see happening is there's a lot of senior citizens that choose to move into the ADU because that's the only way they can afford is stay in Berkeley, and this exemption would take that away from our senior citizens.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mostly want to echo those comments. I think that this is a really...
Could you identify yourself, please?
Yes, my name's David Sheeran. I'm the Housing Advisory Commission with Commissioner T., but speaking for myself. Yeah, I just want to echo a lot of what the previous person said. I think this is a great, a really great direction and a really creative policy, and I'm glad that it came down from Sacramento. Affordable homeownership opportunities are really important and really rare. I do want to make sure that we get it right and that we do it in a way that is really getting, that's going to get used. I'm definitely a little concerned about it being based on a condo conversion ordinance that is very, very rarely used. So that's a concern, I guess. And I just, you know, really want to, you know, this is very different from, you know, a 12-unit building being converted into a condo. And I think to the extent that there are larger multifamily buildings that have ADUs that are being rented out, and those ADUs are getting broken off and sold separately, like, yes, every rule, everything is fine and great, but I think that in the sort of the spirit of the golden duplex exemption, we should definitely do our best to maintain that, to whatever extent possible, because we want people to actually use it. So that's the main thing, and that's something that I think is going to be really important for us to do when crafting the policy if it's actually going to get used, which I think is really important. The other thing is, again, on the building stuff, I think I am clearly confused about how it works. One thing I do want to emphasize, I guess, is that both as a matter of state and local policy, you know, we don't require, we don't necess, like, as a, for legalizing unpermitted ADUs, the city can't, I'm not sure how compliant we are with this, but you can't deny a permit for an ADU just because of a building code violation. That's a relatively new thing, if it was built before certain January 1st, 2020. And the city itself has a pilot program for getting people to legalize ADUs under even lower, lower building code standards. So I just want to make sure that we're not unnecessarily cutting ourselves off from, you know, folks who might want to go ahead and do this conversion so that they can, so that they can do it, because that's what we want. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, hello, my name is Bryce Nesbit again, same person as before, doing permit consulting work. When a homeowner has a problem with their unpermitted ADU and they're freaking out and they ask around enough, they end up calling me. They get referred to me pretty often, so I've worked on a lot of these options. I'd like to support the comments of the last two speakers and add that I think you should reconsider section, hold on, technology to simplify our lives, Section 50C2, which requires meeting, in some cases, current building code with an existing building. Now, if that passes, I'll get a lot of business, because my business is to help work through those issues of matching building code. But if you don't pass this, if you delete this section, you'll get a lot of more ADU conversions. Second, I'll reflect on the last two speakers on the general topic of single-family conversions and the willingness to perform those conversions depending on the rent control laws. And here I have plenty of stories. When the demolition ordinance began to be enforced in Berkeley, my phone lists, my text messages were ringing off the hook from owners who had unpermitted units that they had been renting out often for decades, and what they wanted me to do was to help them quietly disappear those units. And that's not my favorite kind of work, but that's what happened. And so I helped those units quietly, those owners quietly disappear those units. In some cases, they had been registered with the rent board or were known to the planning commission, and we went through some process. And in some cases, they just quietly didn't show up for rental again. And that's the kind of impact that some of these policies have on the vibrant market for sort of short-term and unusual rentals. Sometimes these are little spaces, big spaces, tall ceilings, backyards, weird spaces, but they were available to people under the old informal system where everyone and your council member had an unpermitted ADU. Didn't call them ADUs like that. I think that the single-family lot situation and the apartment situation are completely different. Many of my clients are apartment owners. When they add an ADU, it's not really an ADU, it's just more units. I don't know why you call them ADUs, they're just more units. I think that going back to the roots of what an ADU is, which is using up some extra space on a single-family property, is a much better way to go, and just call those other things more units. I'm all for them, but why should they have any separate rules to go? So, last piece, back to that single-family home, I have, I see, I've got, I'll wrap up super quick here. In the hills, we have single-family homes that are fairly large with an ADU in the backyard, and tons of space in the basement for a JADU. And the only reason those aren't being developed is when you add the JADU, you no longer have the ability to sign a month-to-month or fixed term lease. That's the only reason. Otherwise, we'd have a bunch of those JADUs, I'd build dozens of them. Again, your rules have consequences. Thank you.
My name is Katrina Lovira, and I'm a planner in the report as Bronka introduced. And thanks Bronka for your great presentation and thoughtful staff report. I just wanted to point out on page two of three of the staff report, there's a table that notes the coverage, and, you know, I know, coverage, it gets thrown around here and there, so I know it's kind of, it's a tough one to decipher, but an additional thing that I would note here is that there is also partial coverage. And partial coverage means that they do have tenant protections, but they may not have the rent control mechanisms available to them. In addition to that, it's, you know, I even, as a planner, have like this whole decision tree where I look at ADUs and if they're unpermitted versus permitted, you know, when they were established and how long the tenancy has been, it impacts what type of coverage they have. So for instance, on the table, there's a note about single-family homes and if they have an ADU, they're present. It's actually if that ADU had a tenancy after November 7th, 2018, and if it's owner-occupied, that's when it's fully exempted too. So there's a lot of little nuances, and I'm sure it'll get hammered out as you all progress, but I just wanted the commission and staff to be aware of that. And, yeah, just a note, because I know that unpermitted units were kind of noted here. For the most part, when the rent board receives or views an unpermitted unit, it's typically fully covered by the ordinance. But of course, I think that depends on when that unit was established, tenancy, et cetera. But, yeah, looking forward to hearing the planning commission's thoughts and direction. This will also be discussed at the May 17th rent board meeting. Thank you.
Okay, does anyone else want to speak? Any other public comment? Okay, well, then I think we should go ahead and start the commission's discussion. And what Jeff did that I found very helpful was that we just went down and people commented, you know, first, their first thoughts, and then if there was something that we wanted to discuss at length or a little bit differently, then we would sort of dive into it then, but to give everybody a chance to talk first. So I'm going to just follow what Jeff did, and maybe we'll start with Commissioner Owens to have a listen.
Yeah, maybe I didn't read the agenda closely enough, but this proposal, specifically the provisions that are controversial, I suppose, do they emanate from council directive or from the rent board?
So implementing the ordinance came from the council, and then we had discussion here at the planning commission and got some direction from the planning commission, and that led to drafting the ordinance.
Right, okay.
Well, maybe I could start by saying the main thing that we're addressing tonight has to do with the idea of the, okay, the exclusive right to purchase and whether or not, whether, you know, whether the timeframe of that or what that looks like and what it entails. And I think we've uncovered some other questions that are kind of confusing for us about other situations of these ADUs or the additional units that probably we should clarify. But the main question that we're trying to answer has to do with the exclusive right to purchase and how to, what that looks like.
Sure, I don't want to delve too out of scope. I guess I don't particularly have any questions about the ordinance proposal, so maybe if someone has any particular contention, I'll hear it.
You'll get another chance to talk, don't worry. Blaine?
Yeah, the last comment from you, Katrina, actually brought up some more questions for me, so I think there's more information maybe to get from staff, but I'll just kind of start with my thoughts so far. I've been thinking a lot about this the last few days and trying to understand, because I think, you know, I would, like, if I had a great relationship with somebody who was renting a house in my backyard, I would want them to be able to purchase it, and I'd want to maybe go like a little further to help them do that. If I was in the reverse situation of being that tenant, I'd want to have some incentive for that owner to help me do that. It feels like the right thing to do. But I have been thinking a lot about some of the maybe unintended consequences of like when it can not go well and create some kind of reverse incentives to what we want as well. So I think just to cut to it, I mean, I'm kind of landing on this idea, agreeing, I think there's a different reality for a owner-occupied main house with an ADU that's just different from the other situations. It's just a, it's a different kind of human relationship. And, you know, if the relationship is good and the price is right, it'll happen, I think. If it needs a push to happen because the relationship isn't good, I can really see a homeowner kind of thinking that through, and I do worry about that being a disincentive to do this in the first place. And I also worry about that we're relying on ordinance that is not really tested in terms of setting the price. And I'm concerned about the way that the ERP price is set. As I mentioned, I kind of read a little bit on it, and some other models that I'm reading, you have an offer that's made by the buyer, but you need a third-party offer to validate that so that it is in the market price, so you could have a situation... So you could have a situation where, like, what defines a, a good faith price? I don't even know what that really means. And so a buyer, prospective buyer sets a good faith price, but then it's sort of like set for twelve months. The market changes a bunch, it can fluctuate by inflation, but, you know, it, it really detaches the price setting, I think, from the reality that the homeowner maybe needs to be a part of in the market. So I worry about that. And I just, I just kind of worry about abuse of that process. I don't understand what the enforcement mechanism is for it. Yeah, so I, maybe, maybe I'll just pause there just to kind of index on where, where I'm at with it. So kind of leaning towards taking that out, I would maybe prefer to take that out for the single-family situation. And then on the code compliance issue, this feels like we're setting a particular situation for these types that other houses that are non-code compliant never had to deal with. Like a house is legal. My house is built in nineteen twenty-two, full of non-code compliant stuff. It's legal. I never had to go through a process. I just bought it. So, that doesn't feel right and I worry that it might be illegal under state law to set up a additional barrier. I don't know, but if, but the language is there that this, that the municipality won't set up an additional threshold. And that feels like it is additional to other types of housing.
But your house is fully compliant. That's, this is zoning code and building code and if you're not building, then you don't need to apply the building code. You're just converting the existing house. For the existing houses, you need health and safety inspection, which, you know, only fixes critical things. It doesn't require full code compliance. So that's the difference. But if you are building an ADU, it needs to be up to code.
Even if it was, if, so if it was built in under a previous code, it would be deemed code compliant because it was, okay. Okay, thanks for, thanks for clarifying that.
Yeah, I think maybe that's how I agree.
Oh, life and safety, so there's this.
There's a provision in the code that allows you to be legally non-conforming. So if you meet that definition, then you are code compliant as a legally non-conforming structure for you.
But is that only for zoning code or also for planning, the zoning requirement?
That's the zoning code.
Okay, this is very confusing.
Yeah, and maybe, I'm happy to delegate this to someone, to an architect who knows more about the, the.
Yeah, I'd just like to speak to this. I appreciate your point, Bronka, and as an architect, I'm aware of the policy. I have to say that as an architect, trying to explain this to my clients is exceedingly difficult, just like your finding difficult tonight. And I think that's the problem. We don't want to add complexity, confusion. We don't want to add a cloud to this ordinance. So, for that reason, I'm, I think it's, it's clouding. But that's, that's my.
Did you know, I'm sorry, Commissioner Poole, did you have something else that you would, that you would answer this question? So. Okay, so we're all confused. Okay.
Sorry.
Commissioner.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm, this might be cuckoo and opening up a can of worms, but I'm kind of questioning the like separate chapter for ADU conversions from the like more general condominium conversions. I, I guess, like, like practicing law, I find it really confusing when it's like, oh, well, there's this whole like chapter about this kind of situation and then there's like a similar but different chapter that applies to a different kind of situation. Like it's, it's, and, and yeah, like, I would say like having, having them all in one chapter, it's, it, it would be a little bit convoluted because there's gonna be a whole bunch of like exceptions to the rules. But to the extent that we can kind of make a lot of the requirements the same for any kind of condominium conversion, I feel like for, for architects, for lawyers, for, for planning staff, it might be a little bit easier if, if there are sort of like, as, as many sort of like streamlining or as many sort of uniform requirements for all kinds of conversions regardless of whether it involves an ADU or not. But I'm, I'm also open to them being two separate chapters if we feel like the policies are just so different that it just makes sense to have two different chapters with two different processes. But I'm just saying, I'm not, I, I don't, I don't feel like I heard, it was fairly resounding that we were like, they're gonna be, they're gonna be totally different chapters the last time we talked about this. Maybe someone mentioned that preference, but I'm, I'm sort of open to whatever format is like easiest to follow and has the fewest number of like, oh, but in the ADU chapter, it's this, this document has to be recorded as of the conversion. But in the other chapter, it's something slightly different than that. It's gonna be confusing. So I'm just throwing that out there and I'm open to whatever staff will wanna do with that and comment. And I'm also really glad to hear that this is going to the rent board in a couple of weeks because I think there's, it sounds to me like there's maybe some fine tuning that the rent board can, can help with here in terms of the like, what, what is a covered rental ADU? What is an exempt ADU? Maybe there's a third category or not. So I wanna see those things ironed out. I have another concern, and again, this pertains to like the, there being like two different chapters with two different processes. As I understand it now, in the existing condo conversion ordinance applies this affordable housing fee to a lot of conversions. And there are like exceptions for like certain owner-occupied, smaller properties, blah, blah, blah. But as a general rule, there's this affordable housing fee. And as I understand it, this new proposed chapter does not include any affordable housing fee at all. And I'm fine with like a homeowner who owns their property with a single-family home and an ADU and wants to do this condo conversion ordinance. I'm fine with them being exempt from any kind of fees. But what I'm worried about is like this, this new chap, this new proposed chapter contemplates parcels with as many as ten units going to this conversion process. So that's not like, that's not like a family or a homeowner, like, you know, sort of doing something neighborhood scale. That, that's like a, that's like a investment group, you know, being a, being a real estate developer. And I kind of feel like, well, if the general rule is that condo conversions have this affordable housing fee, I kind of feel like that developer doing a ten-unit project should be subject to the fee. So I don't know what is the right answer, but like a, a few people in the room have, have mentioned like making a distinction between like owner-occupied versus non-owner-occupied. So, again, I feel like a lot of this, a lot of the differences should be based on, is it owner-occupied? Or is it smaller than a certain number of units rather than, is it legally technically classified as having an ADU versus not legally technically classified as having an ADU? So again, this is like me sort of questioning this whole way of like separating these out into these two chapters here. And maybe there actually should just be one ordinance with maybe greater requirements for those like developers, not owner-occupied parcels here. I think those are all my like, kind of questioning and pulling things apart comments. But I'll just say that I'm really excited that the city council referred this to us and that we're working on this because I myself became a homeowner less than two years ago and found there were very few opportunities to buy like an apartment, you know, that's one or two bedrooms. Like if you're looking for a home in the Berkeley market, you're seeing a lot of like, you have to buy a whole single-family home. You have to buy a whole duplex. You have to buy a whole big ass thing that is like way expensive and unaffordable for a lot of people, myself included. So I'm really excited that this is moving forward. And I just wanna make sure we get something that's like easy for people to, or reasonably easy for, for practitioners to kind of follow and comply with and that is reasonably protective of, of tenants. Oh, and I can, to your point Commissioner, about the, the purchase price. I, I agree that could maybe use a little bit of fine tuning. Like what if the proposed purchase price is, like if the tenant feels like the proposed purchase price is too high, they should have an opportunity to like bring in an appraiser that the parties mutually choose. Or there, I, I worked on like real estate option contracts and things like that. I could pull up some like template language about like, oh, first this happens, first this offer, then this offer. There's a deadline to, you know, accept or decline an offer. And then if parties still can't agree, then maybe they hire an appraiser or something like that. So I could, I could follow up with staff about that. But yeah, that, I think that could use a little more nuance, the, the way of determining the price. But, but I, but yeah, I really appreciate all the, all the thought and work that has gone into this. And yeah, let's, let's do this and let's try and get it right or as, as close to right as we can. Thank you.
So, yeah, appreciate everybody's work on this. I appreciate as a member of the public mentioned, the innovation on the state level that we're being tasked to implement here in, in the city. Appreciate the task force work to, you know, inform this process in great detail. And just wanna second a couple of things that were already mentioned and bring up like maybe a couple of new ones. So, I, what Commissioner was mentioning about sort of this built-in incentive. And you know, if you have a good relationship with a tenant in an ADU situation, you're gonna wanna work with that tenant to figure out a way to, to make them your, your buyer because there's a lot of certainty there. And then you get to live, your neighbor gets to be someone that you enjoy living with and have for some amount of time. So I think, again, going back to the idea that these small-scale kind of communal living arrangements, I live in a duplex, are their own kind of animal. They do generate a tremendous amount of our more flexible, more affordable and, and more enjoyable types of housing in, in, in the world. And I think also back to, you, you mentioned something about this isn't, hasn't been tested. One thing that has been tested is the advent of ADUs in the state of California. It's just, you know, fantastic illustration of, of success. And I think, did you mention that twenty percent of our, statewide, there are twenty percent of the units that have been generated since, it, it, I mean, that's, but now we have our task with like, we need to not only just expand the number of units, we can expand, radically expand opportunities to homeownership. So, one of my, sorry, I'm jumping around a little bit. I was a little surprised to see the direction, the bullet points from the direction of, from planning commission. I don't remember, I, I remember all of these points sort of floated at our last planning commission, but I don't think that all, at all was a consensus or the kind of direction we gave staff. I think there was concern about, you know, displacement. There was concern about expanding homeownership. But I don't think there was any kind of landing on, you know, these recommended additions to the ordinance at, at all as a consensus. So I just wanna sort of back up a little bit and kind of keep the conversation more open. I don't know if any other, but I, I.
I agree with you.
Everybody, miss, I mean, we all have imperfect memories, myself included. I even remember saying like, what, you know, let's revisit our condo conversion policy as a whole. Like why are they so hard to convert? Why do we have a cap on the number of conversions that are allowed to happen in the city of Berkeley every year? A lot needs to be revisited since nineteen eighty-five. So, and this may be a good opportunity to do it. I don't wanna slow down the process. I think it's really important to get this through and make it possible to allow for this potentially significant improvement in homeownership opportunity in, in Berkeley. Let me make sure I. Oh, and I'm, I'm share, anybody else just confused about the code compliance? I'm definitely confused about that. I read it to mean that units have to be code compliant in order to be eligible for condo conversion. I would not be shocked if nobody in this room lives in something that is, you know, built to code, the current building code. So that would be a major concern for me. I would, I would support striking that from the ordinance if, if that's the, if that's the meaning. I think we have many checkpoints in place to ensure that our dwelling units are safe and habitable, you know, check the boxes of life safety. One last thing, or should I wait till the second round? Okay, those are my last, okay, okay. My last thing is I think there are many good comments shared tonight. Another one I wanna mention is the, the flexibility is, you know, we're, we're, we're thinking about this ADU as an opportunity for homeownership and affordable homeownership, which is true. But also the, the, the possibility to have that utility and control and flexibility over the course of like a lifetime of occupying and owning a property in Berkeley is part of what makes it affordable, part of what makes it feasible for a group of friends or family members to, to look at the, you know, scary prospect as Commissioner Oatfield mentioned of buying real estate in Berkeley. So I think you have to look at affordable, affordability that is built into that flexibility that, that ADUs provide. That's it.
Yeah, at the previous meeting when I was talking about tenant protections, my main goal is to have some protection for sitting tenants that are already here. And so I'd be okay with changing that exemption from somebody who's been there for twelve months regardless of when they moved in. It could be someone moving in in the future, to changing it to someone who is currently living in ADU as of today. So that way, someone, if you currently have an empty ADU and you wanna rent it out, this doesn't affect you. If you go to new ADU, this won't affect you. But then, any current tenants, they don't have to write quote out from under them. And then on the code compliance line, I know, I agree that we should strike that line.
Anything else?
No.
Commissioner.
Thanks. I appreciate everyone's comments and I appreciate the hard work, Brian, that you have done and staff have put into this. And, you know, you heard a lot at the last meeting and you do your best job to interpret that. It's good to give us something to react to so we can help you really hone in for the council, so I give you that. What we're talking about here, what we all agree on, I think everybody here agrees on, is that we need more access to homeownership by the least affluent members of our community. And we all recognize that condominiums and ADU condominiums, which are particularly nice condominiums, I have to say. They're not, they're often freestanding. They're not, just not buying an apartment and building thirty other tenants. This is a great opportunity for us to expand homeownership, which is one of the few ways that people who aren't already successful figure incomes can actually build some personal wealth for themselves and their descendants and their family. So, this is a Berkeley law. This is, this is the kind of, this is the kind of ordinance that meets our city's concern and care for the least skinny community. And I'm very committed to making this law as easy to manage by the homeowner or frankly, by the apartment owner. That's one place where I took over some of my colleagues here. I think we need to get as many of these units on the market as we possibly can. And I can tell you that knowing some local apartment building owners, if you have ten of these units that you could put on the market and you have one tenant who is horrible, and believe me, one out of ten usually is a problem, you're not gonna do it if you, if that, if you have to make it available to all ten to, to buy it. So I think that is a mistake and we, I, look, we all have sympathy for the homeowner not having to sell to somebody that they don't like in their backyard. That's, that's dubbed. That's obvious. But I think, I think also for the good of the community, we shouldn't apply that to, let that happen to a ten-unit version or a six-unit, eight-unit conversion. I wanna make this as easy as possible for people to use. I appreciate the comment from, I wanna get your name, like David, saying that, you know, well-intended laws often have unintended consequences. And I do think the simplest laws that we're very focused on, that we're trying to accomplish, are the most effective. So I'm for striking, actually with the ADU task force has suggested, twenty-one point two nine oh one oh C point two, which is the right first refusal. And then twenty-one point two nine oh five oh C, which is not a safe, that doesn't strike the safety inspection. And we'll still have the safety inspection. It's just the code compliance. Which even though I fully understand the point you made twice or tried to make. to make twice, but you can see we're still not getting it. And if we're not getting it, the homeowners aren't going to get it. And I think adding confusion to the process just kills a lot of units that otherwise might become available. So for that reason, I don't know how to word it better, you know, to make it clear.
Yeah, seems like only us who live in the zoning code.
So, you know, if they move for the clients, I'm going to make a motion to that effect.
Let me, and then let me also see if anybody else is standing. So I really appreciate everyone's comments, much of what everyone said I agree with, and I really think it's a great staff report and really targeted what we needed to talk about, so thank you. I'm, almost always in these discussions, what I'm looking for is, you know, a great deal of flexibility and the opportunity for our hands not to be tied in, you know, a year from now, and two years from now, or 10 years from now, that we really don't know what's going to happen and that one of the reasons we are in our current situation about housing, probably other things, is that in our good intentions, we have tied our hands, and we've more than tied our hands. And so, to tell you the truth, I actually don't, I can't believe I'm saying this, because I do feel that it's very important to be attentive to people who are renters, but I actually think that having any exclusive right, of course, I can't get that right myself, the first right of refusal sometimes sounds not quite right, is not really what we want to do with these. And you have kind of convinced me, Commissioner Khan, that maybe it is all, you know, whatever size it is, and it's not just for single-family houses with ADUs in the backyard, that maybe we really want to try and, you know, accelerate the homeownership of smaller, smaller than single-family houses on their own lawn. So I, even though the proposed ordinance here sort of says, you know, 45 days to 180 days, you know, I'm at the moment thinking, maybe we shouldn't have that. Maybe we should rely on the fact that most people are trying to do the right thing, and if they have a good relationship with the person that's renting their ADU, they'll try and work with them to get a fair price. I also think that the pricing mechanism and the mechanism of trying to figure out what this ERP thing is, is going to create a whole new bureaucratic headache for people, making it extremely confusing, like what is it, how do you notify them? How does somebody prove that they've made a good faith effort to get a loan for it? What happens? How do you have to bring an appraiser in? I mean, it just, it makes the real estate transaction extremely convoluted, and I think that isn't what we're going to do. And, you know, I'm chatting about this with Jeff, you know, we were, one of the things we talked about was maybe what we should do is try and see what happens if we didn't have any exclusive right purchase. And we gave ourselves a couple of years to see whether there really were a lot of these. And then if it turns out to be a problem, then we begin to try and, you know, reverse engineer the really particular parts of it, once we have some data about what actually causes a problem. Are there really going to be a lot of tenants that have the house pulled out from under them? You know, what are the real kinds of protections we want? I mean, I think right now, we're just kind of imagining something, and I think by imagining it, we're going to put a lot of roadblocks in the path of doing it. That said, I also think we should strike the item about the code compliance because it's confusing. And is this part of my thing, like, let's make it simple. You know, let's say we want to do this, we think it's going to bring homeownership to people that haven't had access to that before, to, you know, and let's see what happens. You know, let's not try and constrain ourselves right now before we even know what it's going to be. Maybe not that many people will do it. Maybe people are still a little, you know, I don't know. We don't know. So that's what I, I mean, for me, it's all about the flexibility for the future. All right, now, does anybody want to comment on something that someone else has said? And also, Commissioner Owens, you haven't really had a chance.
Yeah, do you know offhand how many condo conversions there's been, since especially the condo liability issue's been in play? Like, have there been any condo conversions?
Yes, I happen to be the planner who is reviewing condo conversions. I would say maybe like three or four applications per year, and they vary in size.
Yeah, because I mean, the original context of it was, after the 1980 ordinance, people were turning their apartments and mess to condos, and I don't think that's really much of a thing anymore, especially with liability. Okay, I agree, I guess, with the idea that, my understanding of the whole right of first refusal policy was that it was supposed to be for like nonprofits to try and buy buildings in the intermediate period, the sale period, the classic example being the one on Solano and whatever that is, or Colusa or whatever. And so, I don't necessarily understand like the right of first refusal when it comes to someone's like backyard cottage or in-law or ADU. It's like, the land trust going to come in and try to make an offer for that? I, with city funds, I mean, maybe that's something that happens, I'm not very much aware of it. Usually they're aimed at big buildings owned by rental companies. So I guess I can understand striking that from owner occupied for sale units, I mean, that makes sense to me. Although, I'm not particular about the whole owner occupied thing, because I, I mean, I guess, would it also be an issue if, say, a homeowner leases out their home? And then you have an ADU also on your home? I mean, I'm sure that's quite a common thing too, but I guess it's not a very interpersonal relationship. Although even with the right of first refusal policy, I mean, the tenant makes an offer and then the homeowner rejects it, or, I mean, let's say they reject it. Like, that's it, right? I know there's a complicated potential bureaucratic legal system in determining how, whether it's a fair offer or not, but the right of first refusal is not a mandate that you have to accept that offer. So, I don't know, I mean, we can, we can try it, I guess. We'll see.
Well, see, to me, that raises the question of, we don't exactly even understand how the right of first refusal would work, and therefore we'd have to set up an entire process for understanding what it was and who made what offer when, and what, how you set the price, and how much time, you know, I just, part of the complication of it is that it seems like it would be, to set something else up to make, to make this thing happen would also slow down our effort to make these ADUs available for people to buy. But you did something, yes.
Commissioner Twill.
Yeah, I want to back up to, what are the policy goals here? I think the policy goal here is we want to see new ADUs get built as condos, so that there are new homeownership opportunities. We want to see existing vacant units that nobody's living in become a homeownership opportunity. I don't think we want to see existing tenant occupied units switch to homeownership units because that often makes it more expensive, because it's easier for someone to qualify to rent a place than it is to qualify to buy a place. And so, that's why I think that by design, there are a few obstacles to converting a unit that has somebody currently living in there, because in that case, you're not creating new housing, you're just giving it from one person to another. And so, I'll make a motion that we recommend striking the code compliance line, and that for the exempt units, we change it from, we strike the 12 consecutive months or more, but instead change it to the current tenant is occupied unit starting on or before May 1st, 2025.
Okay, Commissioner Twill has made a, has made a motion. Does anyone want to second it?
Sorry, can you repeat the last part again?
Okay, so on section 2129010, strike the line 12 consecutive months or more, and replace it with starting on or before May 1st, 2025.
12 consecutive months here, so no backwards looking, so you don't want like a rolling date, just like?
No.
Okay.
So to kind of make sure that I understand what you're saying, if you have a, if you have any, any unit with a tenant in it, is going to have the protection, anything that goes and gets built forward?
Anything that gets built forward, or if the current tenant moves out and it's a new tenant in the future, that is exempt.
I mean, that, I mean, that makes sense to me.
Okay, so you're.
So I'll, okay, I'll second it.
You're seconded, okay. So now we have a discussion. Commissioner Khan.
Yeah, when you first proposed this, I'll ask Commissioner, I thought it was a really great compromise, and I told you so. I've talked about some more since then. One of my concerns about this is that it incentivizes existing landlords to evict existing tenants, because otherwise they may be restricted from the conversion they need to make. So I'm not, that's one of those unintended consequences, you know, that we talked about. The thing is, it complicates the law. And all I expect, where you're coming from in terms of your intention, I really want this to be in effect of law. So I'm going to make a counter motion that simply strike 21.29010C.2 and 21.29050C. And I might just be able to second the alternative motion.
Okay, so I don't know what to do when there's two competing motions.
You vote on a substitute, happy to continue to come first.
You vote on a substitute first.
Can we, would you?
Wait a second, Lisa, could you explain, could you tell us what the?
If there's a substitute motion on the table, then you have to vote on the substitute, and if it fails, then you go back to the original motion.
Okay, you don't have discussion about any of it, you just immediately go to the vote for the motion?
You can have discussion.
Okay, so a discussion of the counter motion that Commissioner Khan, oh, and you seconded?
Yeah.
Wait, can I, just like a really quick question? Does right of first, so if I remember the rent board ordinance correctly, right of first refusal currently does not apply to duplexes and single-family homes, right? Or does it apply to all tenant occupied structures?
I think it's only to, but in context of ADUs, only owner occupied ADUs with one, single-family residents with one ADU. Is that correct?
I'm talking about the ordinance, but.
The existing right of return, the one that was just passed.
Yeah, that's the correct exemption category.
But so, yeah, but it only applies to single-family, oh, sorry, it only exempts single-family?
Yeah.
Owner occupied with a single legally established ADU.
Yeah.
Sorry to be so precise. Okay, is there another question, either question or comment you wanted to talk and discuss?
Well, it's a discussion, but I also, I wanted to bring up a friendly amendment.
Okay, your friendly amendment to Commissioner Khan.
I, I mean, the quick answer, just in terms of debating this, is I would support this substitute motion. I wonder if you consider a friendly amendment to collect the data that the chair suggested for two years, actually, in this, and advise the city to revisit it, to revisit the effects of it, I think in the spirit of sort of, you know, monitoring the unintended consequences, just having, just having some data, actually. And I guess like maybe the most basic data would be, how many are, like of what type, and how many do we get of these, and how many have renters?
I would just have to add, when we met with San Jose, who was the first jurisdiction to implement the orders, they only had one application in six months. And they're limited to four units, parcel map level.
That would say it has an easy data collection.
Given that you've just got some data, you want some more, or?
Well, that's it, Jose. We're trying to handle it, wait, I'm still trying to keep this sort of in an orderly way. So you made your, you made a counter, right? And then Commissioner Housener seconded, you made a friendly amendment that we?
That I have to consider.
You have to consider, and now Commissioner Oatfield wants to discuss.
I want to make some comments. Okay, so I didn't realize this whole non-conforming correction of non-conforming things was going to, the code conformance clause was going to be such a hot topic, but I'm just quickly doing some research and seeing that the existing condo conversion ordinance on the books, I think maybe has some language about correcting violations that maybe people would like better than what was in the new proposed ordinance. And it says that only the following types of violations must be corrected, violations of the zoning ordinance that result in creation of new units, or the addition of 100 square feet or more of habitable space, or visible violations that govern the structure or fire safety of buildings, the safety of their major systems, such as plumbing, electrical, mechanical systems, or health and safety code, something. Anyway, it's, I don't know if this is perfect, but there's, there's like maybe a more, maybe there's like a better sort of compliance with law language in the existing law, where the state legislation, AB 1033, also has some language around what kinds of code violations may be subject to correction in a condominium conversion. So I'm wondering if maybe we can just like refer to staff to replace that language with something kind of more precise, or that gets more at like major, major glaring problems, and not like any little tiny, like lack of a building permit for some little small thing, just a thought on that. And I, I think that the tenant exclusive right to purchase language just needs like a little bit more fine tuning detail. I don't think it has to be like a really huge convoluted mess. I think there are like, like other laws and like boilerplate legal contracts for when some party has a right to purchase a property that can be used to just lay out like a simple sort of process. So I don't feel like we need to get totally hung up on that, but maybe staff can work on something a little bit more detailed, like a few steps, and what if, you know, parties can't agree on a price, then this is, this is sort of, this is the series of steps that they would follow. So I'm not too worried about that, but it could be addressed. Those are my own comments.
Yeah.
Just one, just one more question, I sort of got along with the favor. Is the right of first refusal conversion legal under state law with ADU ordinance? Or is that a gray zone?
It's not a requirement, and that's how we presented it to the Planning Commission in the previous meeting. It's like an additional policy option.
That wouldn't be allowed by state law?
No, I mean, we are implementing local ordinance, and we do, we can make it not bare bones of what is required by state. So it's not violating it.
Okay.
Yeah.
If there's no more questions, Charles, you want to restate your, or you want to comment, or you want to restate your order?
I think I'm actually obligated to respond to Blaine's request for, I'm willing to honor your request, but the second has to also honor it.
I would, yeah, I would honor the friendly amendment.
And maybe, I don't know if there's more detail that needs to be, you know, added for the motion, but, I mean, I think, I intend something very light. It's just for the planning staff to come back after two years with some data that will help the council, and the Planning Commission just evaluate the effects of the law. That's all.
That is smart.
Okay, can you restate, as, as you can?
So the motion in front of us, the substitute motion, is to strike sections 21.29010C.2 as opposed to 21.29050C. And in two years' time, from passage, or implementation, I should say, of the law, that staff will make a report to Planning Commission on impacts that they've been able to document and observe, so that the law can be amended appropriately at that time.
I would say it's particularly the impacts around the tenant, yeah, the tenant impacts.
Particularly relative to city tenants' impacts. Particularly relative to city tenants' impacts.
So you called them?
I'm sorry. Did, is there, did you, is there a problem with this, you were just looking?
No, we're confirming. Effectuate your.
All right, is that, are we all set with that? Okay.
Yep.
All right. Looks like they're confirmed.
I mean, I was just going through in my head how the data, how the information about the sitting tenant would come to us. But that is something we will have time to figure out.
I mean, it could be a question, is this, is this asked in the condo conversion application? Do you have, do you have a tenant? Was it sold, was it sold to the tenant? I think that's maybe the.
The trigger.
The minimum amount of information that would need.
Well, and also is a, is a tenant, you know, lose their backs, lose their wealth.
Yeah.
Who's evicted, you know, someone evicted, or is that not something that actually in real life happens? You know, I think, but that's kind of, I think, what we're trying to find out. If we find that we're evicting a lot of people, or a lot of people are losing their homes, then that, then we want to rethink it.
Well, could we, could we put that into the, I mean, just to save us potentially another item coming forward? Could we just put that into the motion as well? To just say that like the property owner does like a one-year look back on their tenant occupancy or previous tenant occupancy information? Or?
Can I, I'd like to comment on that. I think, I think you understand what we're concerned about, and, and I think that is, we should leave that to the expertise of the staff. The more, the more that we put into these things, the more we get into a convoluted thing. Because I think that's our biggest concern, right, is that people will, will find people that were being evicted. And that's the issue, that's why we have the first right of refusal anyway.
So that's what I've captured in terms of, in two, besides the, the two deletions, in two years' time from implementation, that staff bring back to the planning commission data with regards to impact to sitting tenants.
There you go.
Okay, cool. That's what, I knew you, that's what you said?
That's right. No, that's what you said.
I think, I know it's not what you want, but it.
It was switching me from a note to a abstention, so.
Did they, sorry, were the two deletions, just for clarification? One was about the code compliance and the second one was about the ERP?
Yes.
Okay, so striking that. Is there any clear on with that? Actually, I'll make sure you're.
Yeah, but the.
It's an addition.
So, yeah, so we are concerned about the impact of deleting that in terms of whether that means that we do not want ERP for any ADUs. So that we are opting out of condo conversion ordinance and the rent ordinance, and I'm not sure if we can even do that.
If I may.
Yeah.
If I refer you to page thirteen of forty-three in your agenda packet, you'll notice there, there we talk about the purpose and applicability. In, under C, I'm hoping everyone is there.
No, 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 we're.
Now it's standing here.
Thirteen of forty-three?
Page thirteen of forty.
Yes, it's the, it's the first page of the actual proposed ordinance.
Go ahead.
Okay. You'll see under twenty-one point two-nine oh one oh C, the current motion proposes striking exempt ADUs with long-term tenancy from the, on, on that portion, the exclusive right to purchase there. You'll notice in one above, there are covered rental ADUs that are covered by the rental ordinance. Those, those would still be subject to the exclusive right to purchase provisions that are included in the rent ordinance. We want to, and you'll recall that the discussion we had, the policy discussion we had originally is that, you know, there are covered ones that are, do have exclusive right to purchase, and then there was this idea that there are these other units that didn't, and you wanted to put maybe a shorter duration one on them. Now the motion has got to the point where, you know, actually, you don't want to put one on this group. We just want to confirm the policy intent is to just exclude that group? Or do we, do you want to go back to the large, the other group of ADUs that are currently covered by the rent ordinance?
So, okay, so what you're saying, Justin, is that by saying, by claiming twenty-one point two-nine oh one oh one C two, we're only striking the, the exempt ADUs from the policy. Whereas C point one, which are the covered rental ADUs, would still be, still be covered. But the, we could, I could, the intention was actually trying not to strike both of those. So is there a legal restriction behind striking both of those?
That's the one more question, I think.
Might have to study that.
Yeah.
Well, I think that, that, I'd, I'd like to amend the motion to state the intention of what I was proposing. So there would be exactly as stated, but it would also include the striking of twenty-one point two-nine point oh one oh point C one if the city attorney finds that that's not in contradiction to the law.
And the effect of this would be no tenant protection and no ERP for ADUs.
That's right.
Describe the, could you describe the difference between the covered rental ADUs and the exempt ADUs? I just can't.
The, the, my point, the covered rental ADUs would be like in the apartment buildings that I was talking about, is that right?
Well, as, as Katrina pointed out, there is complexity to review what is actually a covered unit. But generally, I think the answer is yes.
Yeah, I, I think those need to be available to the community that are compliant as well. And, and the right of first refusal is a real problem for city owners. So that was my intention, to strike if it's like, if it's not, if it's not in contradiction to other laws that we would reconsider.
Yeah, because my, my, my direct reading of this provision is it's really just a referral. I mean, it, it's just a reference to the rent stabilization ordinance, and it restates portions of the rent stabilization ordinance.
And I, what I'm not sure about, because I'm not an attorney and like, I understand, is that in establishing this condominium conversion law, I don't think we should be changing the rent stabilization law or contravening the rent stabilization law. So if, if striking that provision means that we are in conflict with the rent stabilization law, we shouldn't do it. If it's not in conflict, we shouldn't. And the rent stabilization law is an independent law, which we're not being asked by councils or justice.
So, so would it be correct to say that you would just hope that we would confirm that this section is largely a restatement of existing law?
That's correct.
And if there's anything unique that we're including here, which I don't believe there is, then that, then we can change it.
I have a motion.
Could we go to Commissioner Twu first, he got his hand up first.
Okay, and then I'll make my competing motion.
Okay, so I would say striking C one would be a huge change. Nobody's asking for this, the ADU task force did not ask for this.
I'll withdraw, that's fine.
Okay, good. I would burn down this entire thing if you could.
I'm getting out of my.
What it would do, would, it would create a way, an end run for people to take it out of rent stabilization.
Okay, that, that, that end of the table has resolved a particular issue for us, okay.
And that's, that's.
Hang on a second, Commissioner Khan, it's Commissioner Ofield who might just.
My motion is to take the draft ordinance that the staff prepared and to refer it to the rent board for kind of technical review and feedback to make sure that it, it drives with existing tenant protection laws while more or less trying to stay in line with the intended tenant protections as drafted by the staff. And to come back to us with a revised ordinance that also explores alternative language around code compliance issues and focuses on sort of safety, safety in code compliance and legal requirements per the state subdivision map act requirements. And maybe also if staff have capacity to elaborate a little bit more on the, the sort of steps and timeline and mechanics of the, of tenant right to purchase process.
Okay, that's a motion that you're making?
Yes.
So that's a motion, that's not an amendment to Charles, I'm trying to get, so therefore we need to have a second to this emotion, to this, to this motion. This motion, does anyone want to second it?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Twu second it, so now do we vote on it? And then we go back to Charles?
If there's no other discussion, then you go vote on that.
And then?
Sub, sub, new motion, and then see what happens, and then.
And then perhaps we'll go to Charles, and we'll vote on Charles, see what happens, depending on that, then we go back to Alfreds. Or, I'm sorry, I know I should say Commissioner Khan, Commissioner Twu, Commissioner.
And as it stands, the, this ordinance is scheduled to go to the rent board in a couple of weeks.
Okay. However.
Yeah, just to clarify my motion, based on how the staff report was presented, I thought we were making a recommendation to city council tonight. And I'm just saying, I, I kind of want to first make sure that it goes to the rent board and then comes back.
And just to clarify, I think the intent was it is going to rent board, and then staff would take those recommendations and bring those to council.
Okay, so then it would go to the rent board regardless, regardless of whatever we do, whatever we finally resolve, whatever we all agree on at the end, or don't agree on, it's going to go to the rent board anyway. But that doesn't preclude your thing, which is very specific, so I just wanted to say it's been moved.
Is everyone clear on Commissioner Ofield's new motion? Yes?
Yes, I think so.
Which was to, I'm not.
Do you want to restate it?
It would be awful to restate.
Do you want me to restate it?
If you don't mind.
So refer this to, refer this to the rent board and ask staff to come back to us with any revisions proposed by the rent board and to also present us options regarding the code compliance issue focusing on like state, compliance with state law and kind of safety matters. And then to kind of further flesh out the sections about the tenant right to purchase with a kind of more, a little bit more of a step, fleshed out step-by-step process there.
And Commissioner Twu, you are still seconding this, as it said, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, and does anyone have any discussion on it? I think we should sort of try and move this along, because.
I do have one clarified question. Are you saying that we should ask the rent board for explanations on the code legality?
If, I want to hear if they have any recommendations on sort of cleaning, cleaning up what the staff drafted to make it just like more clear and kind of dovetail nicely with existing tenant protection laws. Yeah, I want to, I want to receive their recommended amendments, if any.
Okay.
I, I just got to ask for perhaps a little bit more direction. We won't have any, if the motion passes, there will not be an exclusive right to purchase provision in this ordinance. So I don't exactly know what we would be coming back with, in, with respect to that.
If, if my motion passes, there won't be an exclusive right to purchase?
Well, let's start with, let's start.
Correct, because of the order of motions, there's still one of those.
Let's do her the motion first, so that we can kind of clean this up. We're, and now we're in a little bit of what I hate, which is the convoluted process. So let's try and at least.
Can I call the question?
Yes, let's go to. Okay, so we're going to vote on Commissioner Ofield's motion.
All right, Commissioner Merker?
No.
Uh, sorry, Commissioner Owens?
No.
Commissioner Ofield?
Yes.
Commissioner Khan?
No.
Chair Martenson?
No.
Uh, Commissioner Twu?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice Chair Hauser?
No.
The motion does not pass.
Okay, so now we're back at Commissioner Khan's motion, which he has stated several times. Would you state it one more time, and then perhaps we can call this question?
So, so as originally stated, it would be elimination of twenty-one point twenty-nine point oh one oh C point two only, preserving C point one, which Alfred is actually. And also striking twenty-one point two-nine point oh five oh point C while preserving D, which is the safety check. And two years from the date, roughly two years from the date of implementation of the law, that staff will report back to this body on the effect, any effect of displacement displacement that they've been able to identify sitting tenants as resulting from law.
Is there a second?
There was.
Oh, yes.
There was a second.
Okay, we have to, okay.
I think we've discussed this enough, so I'd like to.
I'd like to call it by my own.
All right.
And it's going to council, just real quick.
And it's also going to, to the rent board.
And to the rent board and council, okay.
All right, Commissioner Merker?
Yes.
Commissioner Owens?
Yes.
Commissioner Ofield?
No.
Commissioner Khan?
Yes.
Chair Martenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Twu?
Epstein.
Vice Chair Hauser?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Okay, so that is the conclusion of the discussion of this item, and I think that is our only item on the agenda. And so we can then say there's no information reports, I know?
What happens to Alfred's substitute motion?
Oh, we have a substitute motion.
Because Alfred made a substitute motion and I seconded it.
That's correct, I'm sorry, there was a motion that Alfred had made. But does, but does Charles' motion?
Unless it was withdrawn.
Sorry, I guess it was not withdrawn, it got lost in the shuffle of.
It wasn't withdrawn.
My, my understanding of how this works is that someone makes a motion, if a substitute, a substitute motion is passed, the original motion is nullified. Because the substitute motion passed.
Yeah, that's correct.
Right.
So that's it?
Yeah, because you're.
So that would make sense.
I'm substituting.
Oh, right, Alfred made theirs first, I forgot, okay, I thought it was Alfred made the substitute.
It's a little complicated, but that's why you put in substitute motion first, to get it out of the way if it's, you know, not supported, so you can go back to the original motion unencumbered.
Thank you, I lost track.
I'm sorry, I also lost track. Thank you, Charles.
Little done, Emily, your first time as chair.
I know, boy, I just, but I read.
Three motions, that's, I never heard that many.
All right, so we do have, let's see, what do we have at the end? Are there, there's no information reports, or are there information reports? I don't believe there's any correspondence. Next commission meeting is on June. June fourth? And we have a full agenda, so if you're not able to come, please talk to your council member, correspond with your council member for the alternate, because I think we, it will, we don't want to have not, no forum. And then I think we can take the motion to chair, anybody want to make a motion for, second?
I'd like to second, I'd like to add to that motion my compliments for Emily for first. Quite challenging, well handled, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Merker?
Yes.
Commissioner Owens?
Yes.
Commissioner Ofield?
Yes.
Commissioner Khan?
Yes.
Chair Martenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Twu?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hauser, yes, motion passes. Thank you.
Bye-bye.